Land fire drill.
What have the same?
And then it did pressure dropped, so our system.
It's not a survey.
So.
It's not a survey.
If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have one citizen wishing to be heard, Brenda Gilbert.
Hi, I'm here to talk again about the Health Department syringe program. I found out some other information I want to address. The National Library of Medicine and CDC states that hepatitis B can live on a U-syringe for up to one week. Hepatitis C can live on a U-syringe for up to three weeks. And HIV also can live on a syringe up to forty-two days after a drug user uses it and disposes of it. Also in Michigan, no matter where you stand, within six miles is body of water, river, lake, et cetera. So since the majority of drug users use under bridges and also could on a boat and dispose of them in our water, what is happening to our water? Is anybody chucking that? There's no data saying they are. So are we just assuming nothing's happening? Also, the Drug Task Force states getting drugs and weapons off our streets of our community helps to keep St. Clair County a great place to visit, live, and also to raise a family. So with this program and also with twenty thousand-plus needles out there in our community, is that really keeping our county safe for them? Aren't we going against the Drug Task Force, the police, and the emergency responders by having this program in place and making it harder on them as they're trying to fight these drugs and we're contributing to them by enabling these abusers? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Seeing none, are there any updates? Seeing none, conceptual initiatives? No old business, moving on to new business. Item seven A, the two thousand twenty-three County Veterans Service Fund Agreement Approval. This is a state-funded grant with no local match of about ninety-four thousand dollars.
I'd move this to be sent to the full board.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven B, Department of Human Services Board Reappointment. We're asking to reappoint Barbara Hanke for a three-year term.
I'll make that motion, send it to full board.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any other human services matters this evening? Hearing none. Information only, item nine A. I'll accept a motion to.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, a motion to receive and file packets.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Support. I support that, too. Meeting adjourned.
You didn't have time to forget anything.
No. You just ain't got enough.
I will call the Judiciary and Public Safety Committee meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Present. Thank you. Seeing no additions or deletions to the agenda, if we could have a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any citizens wishing to address Judiciary Public Safety Committee? Seeing none. We have no updates, conceptual initiatives?
None tonight.
Thank you. We have no old business. Under new business, item seven A, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Agreement. This is a fifteen thousand, thirty-five-dollar no-match grant that is going to be used to purchase a smart antenna device for crime scenes.
I'll make a motion to move to full board. Support.
We have motion in support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This item seven B is a final action. If we could, it's a contract renewal request from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, in probate court. This is the same contract we had last year with the six percent increase for the current year.
I'd move this be approved for final action.
Support.
Unrelated, but you talk about DHHS and they rent half of our other building over here, right? I think by the end of the year, they have a six-month renewal notice that they would have to give us if they're going to stay or not. I think they've kind of indicated that they're still hanging around, if I'm not mistaken, but we will. We'll know more on that here in the near future.
Yeah, I think it was January, they had to notify us and because they have a June.
They've been in here, correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, ever since this place was built?
November.
November's the deadline.
Do we have to, this isn't really financial, so it's just all in favor? Or do we need a?
I think we would need a.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Georgia?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Why did I put on?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven C, the Community Foundation of St. Clair County Grant Application Approval. This is going to be used for hiring purposes so that we could hire someone that didn't have their police academy taken and it's going to allow, the money will be allowed to put two cadets or two people through the program to get their accreditation.
I'd make a motion to move that to full board. Support.
Motion in support. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven D, the fiscal twenty-two COVID- nineteen tests testing in the County Jail's Grant Agreement Approval. This is for final action and I think if I could, Jim, if you'd like to talk. I just had a question. So this grant is in the amount of eight hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred dollars and it's a no-match grant for us and it's to be used to pay for expenses that we've incurred and didn't get reimbursed for. So. But there was a memo that said there was only eighty thousand dollars in recoverable at this time?
At this time, that's all that's recoverable. There's some certain stipulations to what you can recover and a lot of the stuff that we recovered before was already federally funded or we already received compensation for it. So this is the stuff we have and and we went through a lot of our records because that number's pretty big and we wanted to capture every dollar we could and this is what the final number is so far.
Okay, but if we come up with something else, we can still put it in there?
Absolutely.
Yep.
As long as we're willing to take it, we're willing to bill him for it.
Good. All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? This is for final action. Does this require roll call? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seventy, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement Approval.
I'd move this to be sent to the full board.
Support.
This was forty-three thousand, forty-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars that we get that pays for half of our emergency director. Forty-one percent of his cost, I guess, is what it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven F, fiscal year twenty-three Raise the Age Grant Agreement Approval. This is moving people that are seventeen into, or keeping them as minors instead of trying them as adults and the state is going to be picking up the cost of doing that and the amount is two hundred and thirty-nine, two hundred, I don't know, let's hear. Two hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Six hundred and eighty.
Six hundred and eighty dollars from October first, twenty-two to September thirtieth, twenty-three.
Make a motion, send it to full board.
Support.
We have motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item seven G, the Resolution twenty-two thirty-nine State Disaster Contingency Fund Grant. This is a sixty-three-hundred-dollar cost recovery grant from when the water main break for the Detroit Water Line happened and we're going to be able to turn that in, I'm assuming, to them to reimburse us or the state because it was considered emergency. But that's what this is for.
I'd make a motion to move it to full board.
Support. Motion in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven H, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Residential Substance Abuse Treatment Grant Award Approval. This is a total of two hundred and forty-two thousand, seventy-two dollars. It's a twenty-five percent match, so the feds are paying a hundred and eighty-one, five fifty-four. Region ten picks up thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Our Sheriff's Commissary Fund is putting in nine thousand and the jail fund is paying nineteen thousand and eighteen dollars and this is used for Intervention Center.
Make a motion to send to the full board. Baldwin?
Support.
We have motion in support. Are there any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven I, license plate reader cameras and software. This is going to be paid on the Drug Task Force, year one, forty-eight thousand, one hundred, year two, forty-two thousand, five hundred. This is for cameras and software. These cameras are not enforcement capability. So if anybody had any concerns that they're going to be tracking speeding and going and writing tickets, that's not what this is about. This is to find people and.
Investigative.
Use it for investigative and I believe Marysville.
Port Huron.
Port Huron, is it China?
Marine City's there.
Or Marine City? So this is going to put us in line, everybody can be tied together. It's just going to be a good system.
Make a motion, send it to full board.
Support.
All right, we have motion support. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Are there any other judiciary public safety matters? Seeing none. Information only. What do we have? Motion to receive and file packets. So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Baldwin?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Here, let me pick it up. Thanks, James.
Good evening. I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Work Committee to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here. Seeing no deletions or changes to the agenda, could I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any citizens to be heard this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to updates. Are there any updates by commissioners?
I got a couple here, Duke.
Yes, sir.
You may have seen that the state of Michigan just replenished some, what's called the SOAR Fund. Strategic Outreach, something, something. It's like another eight hundred and fifty million they put into that and it's to be used for attraction. And some of the other things that they did, too, is the site readiness. They set some money aside for site readiness, everything that we've been talking about here, county-wide, to try to get some of these sites available. So, which is good news because we truthfully get a lot of stabs at some stuff so that I think the site readiness conversations will even escalate even more on our end. The city of St. Clair just recently received a eight-point-two-million-dollar stormwater loan from somebody, one of the agencies. But there was a two-point-seven-million-dollar grant that was actually associated with that that will help the city with their additional water capacities. They've got some sewer upgrades and some other stuff that they need down there, so. Some good stuff.
Good stuff. Any others? Okay, moving on, conception initiatives this evening. None. Nothing like it. No old business, moving on to new business. Let me get this up here. Hold on one second. Item A, Brownfield redevelopment, reappointments.
I'd make a motion to send this to the full board.
Support.
So there's three new appointments going on, reappointments. Paul Maxwell, John Monte, and Dave Struck will be all extended for three years. Any questions on the motion?
You got to ask David if he'll accept.
I'm in. I'm pretty sure he would, yeah. Do we have a motion? Support?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the two thousand twenty-two Airport Six-Month Tractor Agreement, Rental Agreement.
Motion sent to full board.
That is with tri-county equipment for a six-month lease for two thousand dollars, a month for twelve thousand dollars. Is there support?
Support. Baldwin?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number C, the St. Clair County Emergency Repair Housing Program.
I'd make a motion to send to full board.
I would support.
Any questions?
Do you know, I mean, I was reading through that and do we utilize those funds? There's thirty-five thousand. If we spend less than thirty-five, we.
Yeah, the funds that come in, if they're under that threshold, they become flexible, essentially. They still need to be, kind of meet the intent of.
Right.
CDBG. So we've used them for things like when we worked with MSU and like the Birchwood Mall Study, stuff like that, specific projects that pop up. So at this point, you know, like I said in the memo, we're really trying to boost this program a little bit because otherwise we'd have to send this money back, but we want to be able to help more homeowners.
Sure. It sounded like a pretty neat idea. I don't know.
Yep.
Yes, it did.
Are there, for emergency repairs, there aren't limitations, though, because when you.
Fifteen thousand.
I mean, I'm sorry, yes, I knew that limitation, but you don't have to have specific. So reading through it and thinking when we've had flooding and someone who didn't have flood insurance, there aren't restrictions, like if you didn't have flood insurance, you're not eligible. It could be from any kind of water because when I read through, I saw, you know, well septic, leaking, failures, standing water, flood damage, so.
Yeah, there's.
Has it ever been utilized that way?
We've actually never done an emergency repair program like this.
Okay.
So this is, this is brand new and it's actually shifted over the years from MISTDA to MEDC.
Okay.
So there's certain parameters of what's eligible and what's not eligible, which will ultimately be in our program guidelines for this. So that is a good question in terms of the flood insurance piece.
Yeah, if you had to have it, because I'm thinking of the properties we have in Birchville that have a failed well and then down the south end of the county specifically that, you know, even when we had that, it was essentially a stormwater drain system failure, but it was due to floodwaters. But there were houses that this would have been game-changing.
Right.
So. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the administrative agreement approval with the Blue Water Community Protection.
Motion to send to full board.
Support.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item E is the landfill materials procurement for broken asphalt, asphalt millings, crushed concrete, crushed limestone, river rock, riprap, two-in-a-sand, and unscreened topsoil.
Make a motion to send this to the full board?
Support.
Are there any questions? Motion carries.
You know, we need to take a vote.
Oh. All in favor? Any opposed?
We're not spending the money now, are we?
No, no, it's not.
Don't we do a roll call when we actually approve it?
Pardon?
We just do a roll call when we finally approve it.
Right.
He forgot, he forgot to even ask for.
Oh, got it.
Yes. At least somebody else forgot with me. Item eight, the Smith Creek Landfill Activities Report.
Motion to receive and file.
Support.
Any questions? All approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nine, any other public matters? Item ten, information only, the Parks and Rec financial documents.
Motion to receive and file.
Support. Baldwin?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eleven, receive and file.
Motion to receive and file.
Support. Baldwin?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And number twelve.
Motion to adjourn.
It's a tie.
Support. All in favor?
All in favor. Any adjourn? Out.
This time I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Bone?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Present and accounted for. All right, moving on to number two. I see we have a couple of additions. A, I'd like to move to seven I and two B to seven J. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Can I have a motion to accept the amended agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We do have one citizen up, Cheryl Majors. Would please, you get three minutes, talk to us.
Hi, I'm coming before you tonight and I gave a copy of a sample resolution to Ms. Beeden.
Could you turn the microphone down, just if you tilt it down a little bit?
Sure. Okay. I'm here tonight to talk about the ERIC system, the election registration information system that the state has taken on and has been using since two thousand eighteen. I don't believe that we have taken any money and involved with anything that goes along with that, but I want to encourage you to agree to not get involved with the ERIC system. It appears that it's violating, number one, a Michigan law which is selling our data or giving our data to an outside organization, a private, non-governmental organization. And it's also, now we're in a litigation, I guess, with another law, HAVA, which is a federal law, which is, I can't remember what it was, what it stands for, but that was recently filed. That's Help America Vote Act. Recently filed by PIME. Integrity of, I'm sorry, Pure Integrity Michigan Elections and also My Fair Elections. I really would really like to see St. Clair County not be involved. I don't believe that we were, but I would also like us to make a commitment to not be involved with the ERIC system and to get us out of that. Are there any questions?
Normally what we do, I mean, we're all welcome to question you, but normally when citizens address the board, we just listen to you and then we'll listen to whoever presunts it and then I will forward that potentially to our administrator, which I want to do with this and at least do some investigation on it because first I got it just before the meeting. It's hard to have a position.
I believe that there was also somebody from the Pure Integrity Michigan Elections, also My Fair Elections. Last name is Johnson, Patrice Johnson, may have already sent you all something asking you to do the same thing, but I, as a citizen of St. Clair County, am asking you to follow through and support. to follow through and support un-registering or not getting involved with the ERIC system. It sells our data, it sells my personal information, gives your personal information out to a privately funded organization that is not nonpartisan. Thank you.
All right, updates, I do have a couple, and I gave all you commissioners a heads up, I went to the Road Commission Meeting last Tuesday, and with the increased, the short version, the increased cost for fuel, limestone, and various things that culverts. We're currently sitting at nine-hundred-thousand money match with the twenty-three townships, and what I'm going to request is that we give the county administrator direction, I don't believe we need a motion, and let her determine where the funds may be coming from, but a hundred thousand dollars added to the twenty-twenty-three budget to get it up to a million dollars for the townships. So we can discuss it, I don't know if I need a motion or not.
You can have her explore it, I guess, and just take a look at it and bring back some options, you know, for it, because this was not, this was not previously something the Road Commission had actually asked of us, you offered it up, I guess, and then, so if Kerry wants to take a look at it and.
Our new director's only been there just over a month, though, so. I went to the meeting.
It was at a million at one time.
Yes.
And then it got dropped down to?
Six hundred.
Six hundred thousand?
Was it five or six?
Five.
Because I addressed you when I was.
And then back up tonight.
For the townships.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's worth looking at.
Because we need to get that done for the twenty-twenty-three budget, so we need to have it done potentially in October, so they can do their work, and we have our assist with that. So I'd like to fast-forward this if we can, and for consideration, potentially have it on our agenda for the full board.
Okay.
Second item I have, had to do with when Steve Smasco, he brought to this board, and he, we considered it, and I believed we agreed to it, to have a committee as far as the ARPA funds, to put a priority on the remaining ARPA funds, and get various officials involved in a public format, so we can put a priority base. We have a lot of important things that we're doing in the county, and I think that needs to be addressed to put them on a priority basis. So I'm asking that we form a committee.
Do we wait, well, we're going to have a changeover.
Yep.
The funds don't have to be spent till
Yep.
twenty twenty-four, whatever, I would say let's wait till we get the new board, I guess, in place, right? Because they're going to ultimately be the ones that would make decisions on that stuff. Unless for some reason we decide to blow a bunch of money with these guys on the way.
I think Duke and I'd like to be on that committee if we can, and we can get rid of most of that money by, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, so, yeah, form some, or just even have an open, do a workshop on it, right? Because this is actually, that kind of ties in with just a meeting that a couple of us had, that we attended. Georgia, myself, and you, Dave, the broadband, we went and talked to Risa just on kind of the broadband, what's going on, rural stuff. And I know Dave's got some more extensive matching, mapping, those types of things, just to, you know, let the public know what they actually are doing, process, how they go on about it, I just, I think we all, well, some of us that have certain rural sections, you get the phone calls that, man, I got no service, I have this, have that, you know, that kind of stuff, and and it's important, obviously, just to keep St. Clair County in a competitive advantage, just who's going to move to your community if you don't have cell phone service, you don't have internet broadband, so. They agreed to get some of the vendors and put something together, and I think that we could, you know.
And I'm all for first of the year, the new board members get on here and then start there.
Yeah, yeah, hear what they're doing.
You might get something lost in translation, let's say Greg, you were on the committee, or Duke, and come then we'll have new members on the committee.
Yeah, and we haven't had a workshop in a long time, and we used to do them a lot back in the day, and we could put some different items on just to talk about, and just to, A, get people up to speed, C, you know, what the, you know, new commissioners, what direction the board.
I think you'd want to do four or five a month, starting in January. Minimum two-hour meeting.
Thanks, guys.
Is there any updates from any?
Just a quick on the Wrigley Center, I was through there last night, again, I had went to a presentation that they had made. One of the guys, Dan Dooley's his name, he signed an agreement to take, I think, twenty-six thousand square feet of that or so over there to handle all the concessions, pretty interesting with what they're doing with the staffing, shared staffing, those types of things, but I, it is nothing short of amazing what they got going on over there, big time, it is really, really, really cool. And I said really, really three times.
You don't say that often.
No. So.
Any other updates from commissioners? All right, we'll move on to number five, any conceptual initiatives?
None.
We have none, we have no old business, moving to seven A, and the first one's for final action, this is Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-seven, Ratifying Collective Bargaining Agreement, St. Clair County Corrections Command, COAM, and this is for final action, can I have a motion?
So moved, support.
Any discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Moving to seven B, cooling tower replacement at the St. Clair County Courthouse. Can I have a motion to send that to the full board?
So, support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven C, contract renewal approval request, UHYLLP, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
UHY actually bought out Stewart, Boulay, Whipple, did our stuff forever, so if you see UHY, it's because they purchased.
Right, it's our same people.
Same people.
Yeah.
Different, different name.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving to seven D, Commissioner McConnell, District One, American Rescue Plan Project, and this is for the Village of Emmett. Do you want a motion first?
I would make a motion.
Support.
Okay, discussion.
They're just going to use it for some roads, there's a road that comes in off of M-21, and it splits three ways because old M-21 used to come right into Emmett, and then the new road went out, well, when they, when they connected them, they put a, you can turn left, you can go straight, or you can go right, and all three of the roads are in bad shape, and they're just going to eliminate the three and make them into one, and save costs in the long run.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven E, Commissioner Dunn, District Four, American Rescue Plan Project, City of Marysville Parks and Recreation Department.
I'd make the motion.
Support, Beeden?
Discussion, please fill us in.
This is something that's been on the books for an awfully long time, it's the old band shelter in the park, it's very much outdated. It's something, when I was on council, they were talking about years ago doing, obviously never had the funds to do it, so. The only issue now, we're going back and forth, to tear it down and build a complete new one, which is actually cheaper than remodeling the existing, so. We're kind of dealing with the historians right now to make sure nobody's got any special value that they're really holding on to to keep it, but everybody's very much in favor of building a complete new one, there'll be bathrooms in there, there'll be dressing rooms for the, Randy's got a lot of people involved, the different theater groups and stuff like that, they're hoping to have a lot of play, outdoor plays and stuff down there, so, and bands and whatever else, so. Thanks. How old is it? Thought I heard seventy-five, eighty years. Yeah.
It's a tear-down trick.
It is.
I've been.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven F, Blue Water Convention Center Baker College Parking Agreement. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to send it to the full board?
Have a second?
Support.
And if you could give us, if you do have it run down, I might be caught off-guard, the parking agreement now with Baker being gone, or whoever's got the answers.
Yeah, I can. As you know, we had an agreement with Baker when they built their housing, and part of that agreement was to replace parking that we lost. We gave them so many years, I think it was five years, to get us an additional thirteen spots, it was more at the time, but they're down to thirteen that they still owe us. The First Amendment to that agreement was to extend the timeframe that they have to complete it. This next phase is they've agreed to, what we've done is just taken a look at our footprint to see where we can get economies of scale and reconfigure to get more parking spaces, because there is no land available around the convention center, so. We're just resurfacing the parking lot, they're paying for it. It went out for bid, the bids will be due back on the tenth of October, and we will bring them back to your regular board meeting. And the contract amendment with Baker College.
Okay, thank you, ah, just for curiosity, is that one person that wouldn't sell their house still there?
No, they, that person ended up selling, and that they were able to extend their, and have their housing, so.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Seven G, Resolution twenty-two thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-two Winter Tax Levy L four zero two nine, and this is for final action?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Moving to seven I, Resolution twenty-two dash forty, ratifying collective bargaining agreement, front-of-court supervisors, I'm sorry.
H.
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 Got H on.
We actually put the additions to the.
I and J.
I and J.
H is treasure foreclosure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, H. Uh, treasure foreclosing governmental unfit report, have a motion?
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
That, so, we sold the properties at auction.
Sure.
Correct?
Yes.
And we received approximately five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars maybe to the good? When you say that's the net, is that less, do we still have to pay fees, or that's what we? The taxes? So that money, we still can't spend that or use it because we may still have to give it back? Is there still court action going on about those? Do you know? Okay, there's still litigation saying that you can't do that, all right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed, now I get to do seven I. Resolution twenty-two dash forty, ratifying collective bargaining agreement, front-of-court supervisors association.
I had to make a motion for final action.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Moving on to seven J, Resolution twenty-two dash forty-one, Ratifying Collective Bargaining Agreement, Communication Officers Union, POAM, and this is for final action.
So moved.
Have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Affirmative. All right, that takes care of the business, at this time, do we have any other Ways and Means Matters?
Is, do we know, I mean, we have how many bargaining units?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three? Do we know how close we are to getting? Four left, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Information only, we have none, can I have a motion, receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.